Meeting will come to order. Thank you all for being here. We like to start our meetings with a moment of silence, so if you can all join us with a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
So this brings us to public comment for agenda items. So if there is item, if there are items on the agenda you wish to speak to, I'm sorry, first we have to do roll call. So Ms. Atchison, give us a second. Roll call, city clerk.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Present.
Commissioner Perdue.
Present.
Commissioner Astasi.
Present and mayor, as previously noted, I'll be leaving after our business to deal with a family issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Present.
Commissioner Knight.
Present.
Commissioner Robbins.
Present.
Mayor LaGrand.
Yes. This brings us to public comments on specifically agenda items. If you have non-agenda items you wish to speak to, that, there will be an opportunity for that later. And yes, if the interpreter can come up and explain, we have a Spanish language interpreter for those who need that service, and she will explain that in Spanish.
Okay, hold on now.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes para los que deseen hacer algún comentario público. Este es el momento de hacerlo. Esto es para los artículos que están en la agenda. Una vez que salgamos de los artículos que están en la agenda, entonces más tarde si necesitan también interpretación estaré para ayudarles. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm gonna stretch a little bit.
My name is Scott Atchison, and there should be a handout for each one of you up there. I'm here to speak on fiscal committee number five, that you're giving $150,000 to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm not against that. But I want to say, your Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is Experience Grand Rapids, they have the contract through the county, and your DDA Downtown Development, they're letting you down when it comes to downtown for information. I mean, they're letting you down. I've been telling you this since 2017, that you need the DDA to collect everything that's open downtown, put it in a database, and have a QR code to scan it. And every day, the information changes. And the Experience Grand Rapids should help them. I mean, between Experience Grand Rapids and the DDA, there's over 60 employees. Your Downtown Development Authority, when you created Downtown Grand Rapids Inc., had five employees. Now they've got 22. And those 22 employees at the DDA offices are the ones that should be collecting the information of everything that's open that day, put it in a database for a QR code, and hand it out. Now I want to tell you a little story. The new wayfinding signs downtown, now they have a phone number on there where you can call a downtown ambassador to get information, which I think is a step in the right direction. So I called them, and I said, "What museums are open today?" They did not know if the Ford Museum was open or not. She didn't even mention it. And I'm thinking, "This is strange." I think the downtown ambassadors are not an information system in any way. When the person who answers phone don't know the museum information, or the movie theater info, I think you should take them, information patches off their uniforms and rip them off. But, I don't know how much time I got, minute and 15 seconds? I'm just saying, your Experience Grand Rapids Convention and Visitor Bureau you're giving $150,000 to, plus the Downtown Development Authority that this commission created, needs to have them create a daily information system, so everybody knows what opens, and every day the information changes, so it's real-time information. Thank you.
Hold on one second. I'm not just short of the paper. No funny jokes. How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. I wanted to speak on fiscal committee resolution for, so I'd like to thank the Michigan Department of Human Health Services for helping us create an eviction prevention program, because it's hard. We have a federal government, a president that doesn't care about us, our citizens. He's cutting funding from the education, healthcare, aid from countries, and different things like that. And so, what I would like our state to do, if that department could, is to be able to help us put some funding into our community to actually build some housing. That'd be a nice thing to do if the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services not could just help us create eviction programs, because here in Kent County, we have a housing crisis. We need at least 34,000-plus units. It's probably lower than that now with the different initiatives, but we really need affordable housing. And so, I'd like to take this time to really ask our state government, and the Human Health Department, and Health Services, if they can legislate, and that's something they can do within their office's jurisdiction, to try to give us some funding for our city to create some housing. There are a lot of nonprofits, there are affordable housing nonprofits, very good Christian nonprofits around here that create some good housing, and what they call affordable housing, and different types of housing, but we need all the housing that we can get around here. Also, I want to speak on a resolution for the police, y'all increasing the, I don't know if it's a resolution to increase the police budget or anything like that. I ain't got nothing negative to say about the police, I'm just gonna ask, if y'all increasing the funding for the police officers, be sure that they increase the community engagement, and real community policing, and really engaging and getting to know those communities, because our people are still struggling, we still poor, this is still one of the worst cities for economic development, and for some reason, we keep enriching our officers and everyone else. Like, I got a cousin that got killed by the police. I should be hating the police, and never even liked the police, or believe in the police, for some people feel like, but that's not who I am, and I know every officer isn't a bad officer, just because my cousin was executed by a state police officer. So I just want you guys to think about these things. There's people struggling, there's people that can't get food, we getting food cut from our food pantries and stuff like that, so the Michigan State Human Health and Department Health Services, instead of eviction programs, could y'all also help us create some affordable housing, or advocate to other offices in the state government to actually help us create some affordable housing, and legislate that, because I know that you guys have the power to give funds to different organizations. You guys can't create housing as a city government, but you guys can allocate funds to different nonprofits that can. Also, David, I'd like to thank you for your Merits Mondays that you do, because I actually spoke to Ryan Kilpatrick and introduced him. He's actually trying to get that guy to actually develop a 3D printing house right now, and so he was like, "Hey, can we actually get that done in, way here in West Michigan?" So they're having a phone call, and I'll keep you guys updated on 3D printing houses in West Michigan, because I'm going to keep speaking this into existence until it comes to fruition. Thank you.
Mayor, city manager, members of the commission, I'm Dale Robertson. I'm president of the Grand Rapids Public Museum. I'm here today to speak in support of item number eight under section D of the Community Development Committee. It is authorizing a contract to proceed with construction on improvements in the, what's known as the CARC, the Community Archives and Research Center, and it is a project that will facilitate full community and educational use into the museum's collections. 98% of those 250,000 artifacts and specimens that we have, donated by the people of West Michigan over 170 years, and our interpretation of that is that they were donated for the most noble purpose, in my opinion, which is education and the inspiration that comes from it. I'm not aware of any museum anywhere in the nation that gives access to collections for these purposes for their community like we are doing. And so, I salute the partnership with the city manager, and the deputy city manager, and engineering department, and Kristin Fouth, who, as I said before, is fearless in dealing with all of this. And this is, all of the funds here have been raised by the museum from, from other sources, and so it will end up being an in-kind contribution to the city, to the city's balance sheet when we are completed, and we are happy to participate in that way. We did benefit from a gift to the project at the Van Andel Museum Center at the last commission meeting. It has been a very positive partnership, and it's been a privilege to work with all of you, and to further what I believe then is really the noble mission of this institution, which is, by the way, Michigan's oldest museum. So thank you, I urge your support.
Good afternoon, mayor, city manager, commissioners. My name's Terry Gates. I'm a resident of Kent County, and also the executive director of Healthy Planet Strategies, and the chair of the Kent County Environmental Action Team. I'm here to speak of support for the cap, and I'm really excited that this is a really big day for the city of Grand Rapids, because you are stepping out and showing that you are leading an effort to try to do something about our climate. I just did a race Sunday in 93-degree heat. There's a lot of people who were struggling through that heat, so there's people all over that are impacted in many ways. So, the fact that the city of Grand Rapids is stepping up to lead the efforts, because this is a defining decade. Last year was the hottest year on record in human history. We've also passed the 1.5 Celsius threshold put out by the Paris Agreement, saying that once we get past that threshold, we're gonna start to see a lot more catastrophes, and we've surpassed that last year. So, carbon dioxide levels in the atmosphere are at the highest they've ever been, and we've got, we gotta deal with this head-on. And so, the cap is a starting point, it's a starting line, and we're gonna move forward with decarbonizing, modernizing, decentralizing, incentivizing, educating, engaging. There's a lot of work ahead for the community, for the residents, for the governmental officials. The program Eat, Environmental Action Team that I'm on, is creating the why are we doing this, and the cap is creating the how. So we want to turn the action plans that you're about to approve into shovels in the ground, solar on rooftops, batteries in basements. It's gonna be a whole new atmosphere for the city of Grand Rapids, and I'm excited, because climate action is just not about technology, it's about people. It's about making sure that the kids in disadvantaged neighborhoods can breathe clean air. It's about preparing workers for clean energy jobs. It's about building a city that's ready for storms, being resilient, and, because we know they're coming. Grand Rapids can be the place that cities point to, and they say, "That's how you do it." But only if we match tonight's ambition with the relentless follow-through that needs to be done. So let's work together, let's get together, the clock is ticking, the future of the city is in our hands. Thank you for your support.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Sergio Sirre Reyes. I'm here representing the urban core collective. I'm here to express my support for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and to thank you for, for your commitment to sustainability and equity, and, which I think is embedded in, in the plan. As an organization, we've, we do well in holding institutions accountable to representing communities equitably, entities, and, you know, elected officials, officials like yourself. But something that we want to move into is also recognizing when elected officials lead with conviction and integrity, and they represent the interests of community, and I think that supporting the cap is, is doing just that. So I want to thank you all for the conversations you've had. I've seen all the work that you've put in, having conversations, and coming up with a draft that you're comfortable with and supporting it, and so I want to acknowledge that, and want to thank you for that. I believe firmly that the impacts that the cap will have on our city collectively are super important, especially those that deal with the adaptation components, and how we allocate resources to, to prepare communities of color, and low-income communities, frontline communities that are gonna be disproportionately impacted by climate action, by, by climate change. There's been some talk about, like, the impacts of the cap financially on the city, economically, I mean. But I think that there's also, what I know of is the just transition to renewables, and an economy that, that, that revolves around renewable energy, and not around fossil fuels. And I think that there's a lot of promise in the workforce development potential that will come from that, and from us investing in what's right for our communities. I just also want to acknowledge that the work that led to this, including folks from C4, from EH Zero, from the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition, and countless number of other organizations that, that spent so many hours engaging with residents, also the, the voice of residents is reflected in, in this plan, and I want to thank you all for supporting it, and for acknowledging, and giving community the ability to be represented in this plan. So that, that's all I wanted to say today.
My name is Halfrut, and I live downtown. I'd like to echo what the first gentleman was talking about with Experience Grand Rapids. When I moved here in 81, there was a storefront on the Monroe Mall that had all kinds of information, and I think it's where the yogurt place is right now, across from the Rosa Parks. And you could walk in there during the day and pick up brochures, all kinds of information about what was going on in Grand Rapids. Well, as you know, we don't have that anymore. Other cities have small kiosks, where you can pick up brochures that talk about the museums, and everything that's going on downtown, and some of those are manned, and, or womaned, staffed by volunteers, senior citizens during the day. So they're in there, and they can answer questions, or we could, we have ambassadors. They could even staff those. The Wayfair signs are really good, they did a great job on them, but there's no up-to-date information. And a QR code on those signs would go a long way. People could scan a QR code, which is what happens nowadays, takes their phone out, they scan the code, and that would give them all the up-to-date information. So those are a couple of things that maybe you could look at, or have Experience Grand Rapids do with that $150,000.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Michalovich, president and CEO of Plune Service Company, a mechanical contractor here in Grand Rapids, serving Grand Rapids since 1974. Speaking in opposition to item 10-2, the Grand Rapids Climate Action Adaptation Plan, Adaptation, Adaptation Plan as written. I've been 35 years in HVAC, I'm a license holder, and have previously served on the state mechanical board of rules, and the Construction Code Commission, and also attend code hearings for the I-Suite, right, for the International Code Commission. We have hundreds, Plune has hundreds of customers within the city that, that could be affected by this plan, if implemented. So under the building and industry portion of the plan, regarding strategy one, action item two, to enhance the use of actual data regarding energy use, cost, and emissions, how will you mandate the recording and sharing of information in private businesses, and who will pay for the tools and people needed to do this work? Regarding strategy two, action item one, that seeks to identify best practices that reduce undue burden for reporting and compliance through financing options and capacity support, this properly notes that this plan creates a burden. It does not, however, offer a solution to who does the work and who pays for it. Strategy three, action one, advocates for stronger, more frequently updated building and energy codes that emphasize energy efficiency, electrification, and renewable energy, increasing resources to enforce, enforce the code, and allow local municipalities to go beyond the code. However, Act 230 of 1972 state prohibits any subdivision of government to create a code, or adopt, or amend, or expand. And so, per Act 230, the code consists of the International Residential Code, the International Building Code, International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, and the International Existing Building Code, and the International Energy Conservation Code, published by the NFPA, and the National Electrical Code. These changes, anything that gets adopted and amended, has to be done by the state. And so, really concerned when it comes to the idea that we would advocate for creating code, when the whole reason that right now, the 2021 residential code is tied up in court, is because the state moved it forward without the calculations for energy savings being sensitive to home buyers, and you're putting yourself in the same position that you'll be challenged later. So I understand the desire for the state of Michigan to adopt codes in a more timely manner, and I support that. I recommend that the city officials and public participate in the ICC code development process, and I respectfully request that you reorient this plan to focus on public buildings, public transportation, and upgrading our infrastructure for energy generation and transmission, as a pulse to implementing expensive and complicated programs and policies that will ultimately drive residents and private businesses out.
Good afternoon, city manager, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I've stood in this very place on a number of occasions, urging you to do the work that you have done this morning, and I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition for, as my friend Sergio said, leading with conviction. I know that there is opposition, because people fear change, but change is required of us. We are living in a time where we must move forward, we can't stay in antiquated old ways of doing things, because the times are changing, the planet is changing, and it's not waiting for us to have a perfect plan. This plan will help guide us in our movements forward to a more just, a healthier, more economically sustainable future for the city. I think those who, who fear the costs involved with making the changes that are asked of us now, are not thinking about the costs that people are already living with as a result of climate change. The costs to our utility bills, and to living in homes that aren't efficient, aren't energy efficient, is enormous, and for some people, it's a third of their income. So when we can do things that are gonna reduce the cost of living in a home, it's worth it, it's worth that kind of investment. The broad nature of this plan is one that meets the needs of climate change, which are broad. We have many things, many different ways to approach this, and the idea that it's too many things we have to do, the reality is, we all have to do more than this. But this is a great starting point, and I'm so grateful that y'all have done everything you've done, that you've listened, that you've led with the kind of leadership that is required of these times. So thank you so much, and we look forward to working together and building input from everybody who needs to participate.
Good afternoon. Sunny Gant Jordan. I would like to speak on behalf of our C4 team, and also me as a small business owner of Samaria James Salon for 27 years, and also Sisters in Development. And so, this plan for climate action, our C4 team has really worked hard for, and we've met with many people, fear of coming in contact with some of the people and some of the things they might say. But we were fearless, and we moved the work forward. And so, I greatly appreciate all of you taking the time to listen to us, and to hear from the community, and for our small businesses that are in the underserved community, we deal with this anyway, constantly. This is a generational thing that has been passed down. So for those big, larger corporations or businesses that have those dollars, and they, they've been doing things with no problem. have those dollars, and they've been doing things with no problem, put some of your dollars where the work needs to really be done. And that will be where the climate change needs to come from. So those tools, this is a guide for us to use to change some of the outcomes that have been going forward without and leaving us behind. It's time for change. Just as my colleagues Sergio and Janet have spoke to, these things will make a difference for people that have never seen anything like this before. And many of you may not know where I'm coming from, because you've been comfortable. We have not. You can ride down Granville Avenue. I just went on a journey to Savannah, Georgia, and I will tell you, it is so different there. The tree canopies, and it's in communities that have lack of investment. But they were able to be comfortable and shaded, right? Some of the homes, yes, they need work, just like here, but we have dollars that can be allocated toward that work. It's really going to take a different you to come to the table and say, okay, this is necessary. This change has to happen. We are dying out here, whether you see it or not. If you don't see it, it's because you don't want to. We really need to think about how we roll this out. We worked hard on this project to pull it together. This is the plan. The implementation comes with dollars attached. You all have dollars that can allocate, be allocated toward this, right? Put the people to work. This can create new jobs, new green jobs. We have people that don't have jobs. How many can be created behind this work? There's a lot to think about. Thank you for thinking about it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners. My name is Kayla Snyder. I'm the Senior Programs Manager at the Michigan Green Building Collaborative. We oversee the Grand Rapids 2030 District, which is one of the programs that I manage. I am here today in support of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and I just want to first thank you all for your work on this and all the comments that have been put forth. I think sometimes it can be frustrating when work is poked at, but it means that you all care a lot about this plan and its implementation. And so I'm just going to speak a little bit about some of the concerns that have been brought forth from the business community and tell you that we are here as a resource for those businesses. So if you're unfamiliar, the Grand Rapids 2030 District really works to, it works to decarbonize the building stock in Grand Rapids, but any 2030 district does the same thing in the cities that it is in. So we work with many of the architects, engineers, consultants, utilities, and developers in the city who are trusted service professionals for energy projects. And so one of the concerns that has been brought forth is on the Strategy 2, Action 1, which is the Benchmarking Ordinance. And we recognize those concerns about the potential impact of new building energy policies. However, the intent of the policy is not punitive. It is designed as supportive, a supportive tool to enable building owners to better understand and manage their energy usage. This has been seen in over 45 cities, including Ann Arbor, Detroit, Minneapolis, and Pittsburgh. And they can include any range of benchmarking and transparency, retrocommissioning, building performance standard. That's why we've written it as a best practice to look into, to research. As has been mentioned, that is not, it's not a policy that's being voted on today. But knowing that it's in there for us to look into, we have been working tirelessly to create those resources for those business owners. One program that we've run for over 10 years now is the Michigan Battle of the Buildings, and we see firsthand every year over 11 projects being recognized from a wide array of building types that they're reducing on average about 15% of their energy use, which if a building is spending $100,000 on their energy costs, that relates, that can translate to $15,000 in savings. In 2024, the winners on average reduced by 20% and saved about $11,000 on average. So those are numbers that, you know, you can think about as you're voting on this plan. And again, I just want to thank you for your support. Climate change is happening. It's real, and we need to act on it now. So thank you.
Hi. My name is Aiden Wysocki. I'm a new resident. I moved here in March. I want to also speak in support of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I also want to speak in support of approving funds for the, approving construction of the CARC. It's going to be a great resource for the community, and I use it myself to go down there and find old blueprints and plans. So for the CAAP, it was introduced to me in 2017 when I had talked to my neighbor, who is John Hunting. He's the heir of a fortune which came from steel case worth 1.6 billion, and he had it in his heart that he wanted to be a philanthropist and to give money to this program that could improve our local community and grow out from there. I see it may have been removed from the consent agenda, but still, in the future, I would like us to consider that this is a very important issue. It's getting more important every day. It's, you know, it's going to change a lot of things. It's going to change our infrastructure, our zoning ordinances, and it affects every department in our city. It's just that I strongly feel we need to perhaps add things to this plan. I mean, it has the word "adaptation" in the title of the plan. So that's going to suggest that things are going to change, and we may need to change the plan as we move forward. So as it's written, we, I would recommend that we accept the plan and change it later as needed, as this council is able to do. Something I would like to add to this plan is that we need to reduce the use of steel in construction. I mean, you could see in our soccer stadium for Amway and in the Accrashire Amphitheater, there are large steel structures. The steel industry is responsible for 11% of the CO2 emissions every year. And it's just going to keep growing. If we order more buildings to be made of steel and use that type of construction, we are opening the doors for more CO2 to just keep filling up our atmosphere. And it's just something I think we need to start looking at today. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Josh Lunger. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, and I serve as Vice President of Government Affairs for Grand Rapids Chamber. I want to start by saying I don't think a lot of folks either sharing concerns on the Climate Action Plan or for it are that far apart in their intent. As I read through the plan again, the last 24 hours with the newer version, I'm struck by a number of things which I would say I'm excited that we could support, things like density along corridors, infrastructure investments, parks activation, tree plantings. As I walk my neighborhood and I see that I've benefited from living in the neighborhood in Grand Rapids, it has great tree cover. I hope that everyone has an opportunity. But there are a number of things that are concerning, and we've been very consistent with sharing those concerns over the last several years of this plan. And some of those continue to be reinforced in ongoing comments and focus, things such as mandating energy reporting, which are a step towards retrofit requirements, towards other very burdensome and more hoops to jump through. You know, items like incentivize make me nervous because we've tried incentives here for affordable housing that actually worked against our intended design and reduced the building of housing. We had all these extra requirements on going to fourth floor a few years back in Grand Rapids. It took us years to get the community together to say, hey, we set out to do X, but Y is happening, and we need to switch that. What I'd hate to see is we go down that path again, and we think we're adding to, and we're really taking away from. If things are truly incentivized, if we're truly going to find new ways to support, especially the small businesses, in looking at what they can do to reduce their energy, and it's dollars that can help cover those costs, that's different than adding additional requirements onto what already exists. It's very hard right now. I've spent the last weeks talking about several projects around the region for housing, both affordable and market rate. It's really hard to get projects to work right now. We spent years trying to get the city to, or not the city, I'm sorry, the state to adopt tools that help us close gaps, particularly for housing. And I'm getting, just getting nervous as I look out at some of the conversions going on right now from office residential. If we start adding additional requirements to make every project solve every problem, we will slow this down. The number one thing the city can do to help with emissions on the short term is to invest in walkable and many of the rich neighborhoods where people can afford to live. And I think there's a lot that you are doing for that. As I look through the plan again, there's a lot the city is doing, should be doing, and can lean into. I just want to reiterate, we're concerned about impact versus intent. And we hope that you engage with a broad swath of the business community as you move forward on this, particularly around incentives, rules, mandates, and focus on where we can find the most consensus. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, friends. Mark from Grand Rapids. CDC Number 1, the resolution approving a fireworks discharge for a Tate McCray event at Van Allen Arena. I could care less about this. I want to talk about Van Allen Arena itself. Pretty soon, events like this might not happen due to the current design of the arena. The design is obsolete. A major renovation has to be done. It should have been done five years ago during the COVID period when nothing was going on. Now, that building has been stuck with that obsolete design that has been there since the arena was built. The wall of seats and the upper deck are obsolete. Those things, that design is not 21st century. If the arena in Seattle, which was there since the mid-1960s, at Madison Square Garden, can go through renovations to modernize their arenas, it could be done here. And since it's supposed to be owned by the public, why not do it? Because if not, events like these will be moved, will be gone elsewhere, and you'll be losing dollars for hospitality, helping the residents, the citizens that live here, and everything else. So that's what I'm thinking. So that's what I want to see happen. Because in the future, you might be in for a big surprise where big-time events will be moved, will be going elsewhere, and Grand Rapids will be losing a lot of dollars for improvements downtown and uptown. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ned Andre. I live in the 3rd Ward of Grand Rapids. I'd like to thank all of you for your service to the city and to the people of this great city. I'd like to say thank you to the Commission for the support of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, produced in collaboration with the community. One of the incredible things about this plan is how many voices were heard. I'd like to emphasize the importance of moving quickly from once we get the plan in place, if it's, when it's approved. I really appreciated the prioritization that the Commission did. It is a large plan. It does have a lot of action items, but I thought there was a lot of wisdom in the prioritization that occurred. So I would encourage you, once we get the plan in place, then to move into the implementation phase. I think there's incredible synergy with the Community Master Plan. Some of the concerns that I've heard from the business community and building owners and so on and so forth, it's very short-term thinking, but I like the long-term thinking that I've seen from the City of Grand Rapids with the Community Master Plan, and then also this Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Sometimes hard to see the long-term. If you all remember when the automotive industry was losing their mind because the community had said, hey, we want to mandate three-point seat belts. And the automotive industry went, they had this huge campaign about, we can't have seat belts in cars, you know, nothing wrong with the belt, you know, the waistband. And in the end, we all know that those seat belts were an incredible improvement. I think that same thing will happen in the future, that the very people who are opposing this cap today will look back and say, you know what? It actually improved our bottom line. So the affordability, pardon me, the profitability of some of these things down the line, it will become apparent to them. So I'm just excited that the cap is going to work toward reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions. It will improve energy efficiency. We all know that there's this ever-increasing demand for energy. It's not going to go down. It's going to continue to go up. So we all have to think about improving energy efficiency. It'll help protect natural resources. It will build resilience in every neighborhood in the city. The city itself will become more resilient. We all know that this city is one day, one week, one month, one year, one decade away from another billion-dollar disaster that could occur. So looking forward to that, the adaptation is a really wise thing on your part. And I have not heard anywhere in the plan force, mandate, have not heard anywhere that there'll be this undue burden that will be placed upon the business community. I'd also like to stress the long-term benefits. You know, these initial changes will really encourage a sustainable future, and it will improve all of our quality of life here in Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Doug Miriam, and I am a Ward 2 resident. But I come to you on behalf of the GRAR, the Greater Regional Alliance of Realtors, 3,700 independent contracting, small business owning folks that help with our housing needs in the community. And I sincerely want to thank you, and there's many others in the room, who've been a part of so many wonderful efforts to help address housing and housing affordability in our community. And I must say, thank you for the recognition of housing in the resolution regarding cap. Yet, at the same time, it's a struggle to think that cap action items remain in the list of 197 that will have the effect of causing more housing costs on owners and buyers. And that is why the letter was submitted with the recommendation to remove specific cap actions that will have the effect of increasing our housing costs. You know, requiring energy scoring of homes, advocating for more stringent building codes, these types of rules and costs will increase housing costs and further challenge housing affordability. To support addressing housing affordability, we need to build more housing units and have more housing opportunities. And the way to do that is not to put more costs and more burdens on owners, on buyers, on folks trying to create more housing in the community. So it would make sense to remove specific items from the cap plan that would ultimately result in folks being required to spend thousands of dollars on their properties. And that's important because we want more investment and more attraction to living in the city and more support of city housing. And folks don't need a reason not to look at living in the city by having more costs on city housing. So ask for your consideration of that, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else here for public comment, that brings us to our next item, which is our consent agenda, I believe. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. We've got approval minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to Pitchings and Communications. City Clerk?
First one is communication received from Andres Hernandez regarding his resignation from the South Division Granville Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority.
I refer to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Cindy Landing Birch urging the City Commission to adopt policies preventing the GRPD from working with ICE.
Received and filed.
Communication received from Justine Bryant regarding speed limits.
Received and filed.
Communication received from Linda Ippele expressing opposition to the City of Grand Rapids becoming a sanctuary city.
Received and filed.
14 communications received. Fourteen communications received expressing support for the cap.
Received and filed.
Five communications received expressing opposition to the cap.
Received and filed.
And communication received from Scott Atchison regarding Old View Walking Tour.
Received and filed. That brings us to Report of City Officers.
First one's a Comptroller's Report, Comptroller's Warrant Report for the period of July 15, 2025 through July 21, 2025, in the amount of $55,705,174.40.
Received and filed.
And finally, a Treasurers' Report for the period of July 16, 2025 through July 30, 2025.
Received and filed. That brings us to our Consent Agenda. These are items which passed out of committee unanimously and which were not, and either that or were not removed for further discussion. So they don't necessarily have to be, not receive unanimous support. But there is, they are listed in our agenda, and I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor of passing the Consent Agenda items?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to two items which are removed from consent. The first is Resolution confirming Mayor LaGranne's appointment of Tamara Vandenberg to the Grand Rapids Land Bank Authority. Commissioner Kilgar?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Kilgar?
Thank you. Yes, this is a resolution confirming Mayor LaGranne's appointment of Ms. Vandenberg to the Grand Rapids Land Bank Authority. A resolution has been prepared to confirm Mayor LaGranne's appointment of Tamara Vandenberg to the Grand Rapids Land Bank Authority for a two-year term ending July 5, 2027.
And Commissioner Usasi, you were the dissenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was a no on this item. I shared today in the committee on appointments that I was prepared last time to look at the full slate of our land bank board of the seven that would serve, because I think that is important to compare and contrast the experiences that would be on that body, knowing that this would be the first land bank that we would sit. When we didn't have one of the individuals asked for postponement, that didn't move forward. I moved and supported all the previous six. But today, I feel it really necessary to, to share a no vote on this item, not because of Ms. Vandenberg's experience, but I think that her experiences already reflected on the body. I think her experience is well noted. However, I feel like there is a miss of more women and more women of color to serve on this body, especially as we look at different organizations like Housing Ken or even just our, our housing reports that show who bears the burden of housing and housing, you know, lack of affordable housing or experiencing homelessness in communities. So for me, it's just more of a recognition. I think we have an opportunity. I was disappointed to know that our legislative body doesn't have any women, even though women are the majority of this body. Today, I talked earlier about having a third ward representative on our economic development project team meeting. So I will continue to vote no for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Commissioner Knight?
And I will add to that dissent as well. Again, I know all the work that Tammy has done in this community and have worked in community, doing some of the same work for a number of years, have requested at the beginning of this very conversation to be a part of that board as they began to put it together, was told someone else was going to be appointed to the board. They weren't appointed to a board, and then they went and appointed, are looking to appoint someone else to the board. And I think, as Commissioner Usasi said, that, that representation from that community is already represented on this board. And so I will also be voting no on this.
Thank you. And I will just say that I certainly, putting together this board and putting all, all together, all the boards try to balance needs for skills with needs for representation. I'm certainly very proud of the fact that we have the head of the Urban League as a, as a member of the board, who's a voice for many in the community, and also the representative, one of the board members is the head of the Hispanic Chamber, also a voice for many in the community. And, but I will also add that my hope is when the, once this board is established and we move forward, that we also have an advisory board. The Kent County Land Bank did exactly that, and it had a second body which was able to feed comments and input from the community into the work of the Land Bank. So I'm very excited that we're going to be moving forward on this. I think this is going to be a really powerful tool potentially to help us address housing and affordability issues in the, in the city. I think that its importance will grow over time. And yeah, I'm certainly happy that all the people who have stepped forward and been willing to serve on this have, have done so. And I'm glad to see the broad community interest in the work. So seeing no further comments, I will ask for a vote. All in favor of the appointment of Ms. Vandenberg to the Land Bank, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to our second item, which is off consent. And that is the resolution accepting the Grand Rapids Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and prioritizing certain actions. This is off consent due to one dissenting vote. Commissioner Usasi?
Just need a motion, Mayor.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. On September 28th of 2021, the Grand Rapids City Commission declared climate change a crisis and committed to developing the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan referred to as CAP for community-wide science-based targets. And I'm going to read this whole thing because I know that there were a number of people who came in to speak about this and emailed us. This 2021 resolution aligns with previous initiatives that responsibly furthered services and projects in environmentally sustainable way, such as the 2007 Green Grand Rapids Plan, the Bike Plan, our Parks Master Plan, Water Master Plan, Stormwater Master Plan, Grand Rapids Forward Plan, Economic Development and Mobile GR, and the Bridge to Our Future Community Master Plan, all which emphasize sustainability and livability in our urban, urban environment and development. Additionally, in the fall of 2021, we set our first municipal greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, an 85% reduction by 2030 from the 2008 baseline and achieving carbon neutrality by 2040. Thanks to these efforts of various departments, emissions reduced by 30% as of 2020, with projected 40%, 47% reduction by 2025 through initiatives like converting our streetlights to LEDs, powering the biodigester, and installing a solar array at the Lake Michigan filtration plant. On, on April 29th of 2025, we had a public hearing on the cap, and on May 13th, we did a cap, cap prioritization workshop and recommended alterations. And then on July 15th, the Committee of the Whole provided their direction to adopt this plan and to include these, the top 20 priorities and updates confirmed at that July 15th meeting. And these are referenced in the proposed resolution that is attached in our, in the body of the agenda. To strike a balance, we prioritize these top 20 initial actions of the plan to be strategic and focus, time and, to be strategic in our focus, along with our time and resources given the current national context. This implementation of the plan faces challenges due to significant federal funding for reductions for climate and clean energy initiatives. The plan has received both support and concerns regarding its intent and potential unintended impacts. However, the city will continue to advocate for federal and state funding to ensure that the local community does not bear the full cost of addressing this global issue. The plan aims to mitigate the harmful impacts of climate change through a series of voluntary and incentive-based actions while avoiding unintended consequences that could make housing and, and development less affordable. Additionally, I want to read the last item of the, of the actual resolution that is included in the packet. And that, as we prioritize these 20 actions, that the implementation of the Climate Action Plan shall be consistent with the other goals of the city, including economic prosperity and affordability, and more specifically, housing affordability, which is also noted in our legislative agenda, and is not intended to widen the gap of attainable and affordable housing by creating unsustainable housing and development cost increases. Thank you.
Commissioner Robbins, you were the dissenting.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioner Usasi, for the, the detailed overview of this. So I, yeah, I appreciate all the conversations we've had, very robust discussing the various elements of this plan. I think, for me, my, my concerns are twofold. I think the cost is something that, in my mind, we, we can't get around. You know, we talk about wanting to keep things affordable. Sure, there's, you know, cost savings to people when we make their houses more energy efficient, businesses more energy efficient. But at the end of the day, those, those still require a cost upfront, and whether that's going to come from us, or it's going to be, you know, come from people in the community, that, that top line addition to, to, you know, those investments is something that we can't quite get around. And at the end of the day, that cost has to be passed down to someone, whether that's a business tenant, you know, a homeowner, a residential tenant, so on and so forth. So I think that piece, I don't necessarily think overnight we're going to see an increase in, in our housing costs, but slowly over time, I, I think these things do compound, and in the end can have a, a poor negative effect. So that's my first concern. I think, secondly, too, I'm very grateful that this plan isn't compulsory and that these are goals without like a stick attached to them, or, or, you know, punitive damages that can come from not participating. But I think the other concern I have is just some of the comments then, as a result, where people say like, this is just the beginning. You know, this plan is just a, a starting line. You know, we can change it moving forward, and we really need to be doing more than even what this plan says. And so I think that gives me additional heartburn. You know, if I was a, wanted to start a business in the city, I, I think even just reading this plan as, as written, it would give me some pause to say, you know, am I going to risk putting my business in the City of Grand Rapids, or am I going to go over to Walker where I'm not ever going to have to think about this? So I, I think those are, are sort of the concerns that I haven't been able to reconcile within my mind. In some, I, I think the plan is very well intended, and I, I hope my vote today doesn't reflect a wholesale rejection of everything in it. I think there's a lot of, a lot of good pieces that will benefit much of our neighborhoods. But for those concerns that, that I mentioned, that I haven't been able to bring myself to reconcile my mind, I will not be supporting this today.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I will, we had robust discussion at Committee of the Whole, and so I don't want to go over, tread all of the ground as extensively as we did this morning. But obviously, I think I speak for all of us on the dice here, when I want to extend real thanks to all of the members in the community who worked on this so hard, and this is three years of work, but also the staff members who engaged on this, Ms. Wilkinson, and particularly Deputy City Manager Doug Matthews. And of course, our city manager is the leader on any big project like this, and so his engagement on this has been appreciated. I said this morning that I'm also glad that there is a strong city forward statement at the beginning of this entire plan. And as I said before, the most important thing any of us can do environmentally, as far as I can see, is live in a city. People who live in cities have something like half the carbon footprint of people who don't. And so I really am grateful to the city residents who came up here and expressed their support and their concerns. But I'm really grateful that you all live in the city. And I think that one of the things that we can do as a city is make our city more welcoming for more people and create more space for more people. And I think that's a shared sentiment, even across those who had some concerns about the, about the cap. I do want to say that as far as I can see, there are not mandates in this cap. And, you know, maybe down the road, situations, new discussions will emerge. I mean, that's kind of how government works. But as far as this plan goes, there are not mandates in this plan. And I'll finally say that I am excited to get to work. There are our first 20 action items in here, and these are things that I think we can do. This commission, I think, chose them with an eye to practicality, achievability. There are some things in here which are going to be free. There are sort of free lunches, like allowing people to let leaves rot in their backyard. And there are some things which are going to take in a national investment, like a potentially a green revolving fund to sort of prime the pump. And there are some things that may cost money. But at the end of the day, sometimes I, I do think we need to look, and I, I hope this commission, this body, and any successors, will always look at the cost benefit analysis and return on investment, and all of those good things that we should be looking at in environmental projects. So energy efficiency is something that makes sense if it pays off and doesn't make sense if it doesn't pay off. And we can always be looking at how we assess future, I mean, Mr. Andre, I think, brought up the idea of, maybe it was not him, but the idea of rating houses for energy efficiency. Well, we all can buy appliances and know how much energy they use, and I find that a very useful thing in my life when I go look for a new laundry machine is to know how much energy that thing uses. So even analysis like that, that may have some cost, I guess the real question for me is going to be, what's the benefit? And I hope we can continue to have those conversations. So even things that have, that have costs. So having gone over some of the ground we went over before, Commissioner Kilgar?
Thank you. Yeah. So we have such a monumental and exciting opportunity in front of us today as we pass the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. I want to first highlight the thousands of residents who were engaged in this plan over many years. This is what listening to those who we represent looks like. I want to thank the residents and business leaders who have taken the time to share their concerns, particularly around this plan affecting housing. As I noted during the Committee of the Whole, I believe it's important to be clear, this plan is designed to support affordability, especially for our most vulnerable residents, including many in the Third Ward. It's important to know that there's no policies, ordinances, or other regulatory measures that go into effect as a result of the commission's actions today. And I think some of this sadly, with unsupported claims, just feels like fear mongering, quite honestly, to me. The cap is a proactive step toward addressing long-term challenges that affect everyone: rising energy costs, worsening air quality, and the growing public health impacts of climate change. These burdens fall hardest on those with the fewest resources. By focusing on reducing pollution, cutting energy burdens, and investing in healthier, more efficient homes, the plan strengthens, not threatens, affordability to those who need it most. This is not a plan that locks us into some rigid path. It's a flexible framework that allows the city to set its own priorities while giving our community a shared vision for action. Who's going to go to your businesses if they can't breathe the air on the walk there? It doesn't prevent us from doing things in the future. It simply gives us a foundation to build on. So at a time when the impacts of climate change are no longer theoretical, but already visible in our neighborhoods, this plan offers a thoughtful, inclusive approach to moving forward. That's why I support the cap. Climate cannot wait, and we must not let our fears put profit over people and planet. The cap is good for business and good for Grand Rapids. Thanks.
Any other commissioners want to comment? All right, thank you. So if you're all interested in any other comments, we tape these things, we archive them really well. It was a great discussion at Committee of the Whole. So I would now like to move us on to a number of resolutions.
Got to call the vote, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got to pass.
Vote would be good, wouldn't it? Yeah. I get so excited about moving through the agenda, folks. So, but yes, we should, we should also do things, right? So yeah, I would call for a vote on this. All in favor of adopting the cap? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us on to City Commission Resolutions. There are a number of them, and I would first ask for a motion to suspend the rules to consider the next eight City Commission Resolutions in the agenda.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That suspends the rules, and that brings us up to a number of resolutions regarding our progress on collective bargaining. And City Manager, maybe you want to lay the table here as our bargaining team head comes up?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And Commissioners, last meeting, you approved the contract with our International Association of Firefighters for their first contract of this term. And since then, our labor team has been very successful in negotiating contracts with another five bargaining units. We also, at our next meeting, will bring forward additional two contracts. And so Ms. Moody, who's our chief labor relations manager, will give us an overview of the five items. And I'm happy to say, in a period where there is constant conversation both locally and nationally about labor disputes and morale being affected in the workplace, and challenges around retention and recruitment, that we have very successfully come to terms with all of our labor unions. And I appreciate their work, as well as the work of our collective bargaining team led by Ms. Moody and Mr. Matthews, who's not here.
Okay, I will start with the Grand Rapids Employees Independent Union. And I'm going to, going to kind of highlight some of the, the main terms here. And so we landed with wages at 4% across the next three years. We have a shift differential of $1.50 per hour for second shift and $2 per hour for third shift. We also implemented a, an additional pay step, which will be in effect after 10 years of service, and that would go on also be 3% above the current top pay step. And then we also have additional pay per under leave there for four weeks.
I think we want to take these sequentially. So can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor of approving that contract?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next union here, we have the Emergency Communications Operators. With this unit, I highlight wages. We came across at 4%, 3%, and 2% across the next three years. We also have an additional 1% to the 401A as the employer contribution.
We also have an additional 1% to the 401A as the employer contribution. We also have implemented two additional pay steps for the fire trained emergency communication operators, and that would be a 2.5% increase in between each of those two additional steps. We also have implemented retention pay ranging between $300 up to $1,500, depending upon the years of service. And that completes the emergency communications operators.
And I will say, let me take a break here. We're gonna go through a bunch of these, and I just want to say something. If anyone else wants to make a thematic comment, feel free and raise your hand. But I was particularly glad to see that we've increased our parental leave. It's not as far as I'd like to be able to go. I think parental leave is incredibly important, but it's really great to see that, that increased. And that was one of the things I was glad to see. The other thing is, we all know we went through an inflationary event while people were on the job in the city. So they didn't bargain for the last contract, thinking that they were going to have to live through 7%, 8% inflationary event. So I'm glad to see that this contract maybe helps folks get up to ground and, get up to, losing some, making up some of that lost ground. So, anyone else want to say anything? I just wanted to interrupt the flow a little bit. Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes, quick theme of, and City Manager noted this nationwide, I think of in Philadelphia when their sanitation workers were on strike. You know, I'm very happy that we were able to, in good faith, give phrases to our workers. We have to pay folks for, for good work. So I'm happy we were able to do that across the board.
Thank you. Okay, so second agenda item, all in favor? Oh, we need, sorry.
Has it been moved?
In the motion, yep.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all in, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to our third item.
All right, our next union here, we have the Crime Scene Technicians, Latent Print Examiners, and Police Intern Unit. And so here are the highlights. We also have wages at 4% across the next three years for a total 12%.
Mayor, just, just a second. We, are we, I just want to make sure we're all staying together.
We got it, no. The first two were. The first two were flipped, but number three is number three.
Okay.
Thank you, City Manager.
And probably, let's do a motion right now, too, Mayor. So moved.
Support.
Yes.
Okay, so we're on the same page. Crime Scene Techs, Latent Print Examiners, okay.
Yes.
Yep. So wages for, for poor. We have an additional pay step for, after 10 years of service, that will be a 3% increase above the top current step. We have shift differential for $1 per hour, which is an increase. And also there, we have paid parental leave increased to four weeks as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to our next item, next resolution, kind of a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Great.
Okay, for the next item, we have Police Command Officers Association. And so for this unit, I'll, I guess to start, I'll highlight essentially one of our priorities going into this bargaining term. We wanted to make sure that we were able to maintain our current civilization of our oversight and accountability that we currently have for command and also the Police Officers Association. There was a recent decision ruled by the state that, that is civilian oversight is a, it has to be demand, demand bargaining. So at the risk of not wanting to lose that, that was on our forefront in terms of wanting to maintain our strong language that we have, as we currently do have the authority to look into certain cases there, such as unreasonable force, officer involved shooting, and those types of cases. So we wanted to make sure we were able to maintain that. As well as, I'll note, we currently have a four-year discipline period where discipline has to remain on commands file, in their personnel file for a minimum of four years. And so we wanted to make, which is above the current state requirement. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to keep that as well. So with this unit, we were able to land our wages here at 5% within the first year, 4% and then 2% in the third year. We also changed the pension escalator to a 1.5% compounding escalator, which was previously at a 1% non-compounding. And we also increased the retiree healthcare savings account contributions. So for the first year, there will be no increase, but the second year, there will be an increase of 2.25% of their base wages. And then in the third year, it'll be a 2.5% increase of base wages.
And just to clarify that pension item for the public, Social Security goes up at cost of living, right? But a lot of pensions just get frozen the day you leave your work. And so this is an, this is a, not, I don't want to call it a cost of living increase, but it's something like that, right? Pensions will then go up at 1.5% compounded after this.
Correct, yep, because currently it's kind of a fixed rate. So as cost of living goes up, there is no compounding or increase. So with that compounding, that allows for a little bit more flexibility there.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, brings us to our next resolution. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And this is our last one for today. We have the Grand Rapids Police Officers Association, and this includes the officers and sergeants. And so here, I'll also just highlight as well, one of our priorities was to maintain that civilian, civilianization of the oversight and accountability. And so we didn't want to risk losing that, as we currently have strong language. And then also, again, with the four-year disciplinary period, that discipline remains in a file, we wanted to make sure that we were able to keep that intact as well. So with those, we also landed these agreements, 444, across the next three years for a 12% increase. We also increased the pension escalator for this group to a 1.5% compounding escalator compared to the 1% non-compounding. For retiree healthcare savings account contributions, for the first year, the employer contribution will be 27, 2,750, or $2,750, which is currently at $2,500. Second year, it will go up to 3.25% increase of base wages. And then the third year, it will be a 3.5% of base wage. And there, we also did increase the paid parental leave up to four weeks as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? Otherwise, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to, I believe, a technical resolution. Is that correct, Ms. Moody? Setting a date to consider amendment to Article 5, Chapter 7, Title 1 of the Grand Rapids City Code regarding the police relating to pertaining to police and fire system according to the collective bargaining agreement for July 2025 through June 2028.
Correct.
Support.
Want to speak to this?
Correct, it is technical. Yeah, we have to provide notification to this body as well as our pension board about the changes to the pension system for police and fire. So this is just notification, then you'll adopt it on the 20, I think, 26th, our next meeting?
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, may I just add on those police related items? Couple of questions that were asked and just want to clarify. I was also asked about the cost earlier today and how this relates to what we budgeted for public safety, particularly the police department's portion. And I had CFO look at those numbers, and we adopted a budget roughly of about 35% of our general fund supports police specifically. And I don't think this, these contract improvements changed that ratio very much. Ms. Clarence, can you confirm that?
No, we did do a quick calculation on that. You noticed with all the other contracts, they are very similar with the, the wage increases and some of the other benefit packages. So it is, you know, we're right at 35% again. So, so we're right in parity with where we were when we adopted the budget.
I'll just conclude my remarks with, particularly for public safety police. These contracts will allow us to, as Ms. Moody mentioned, remain competitive in staffing. And the police chief is very close, as his latest updates to public safety in terms of having full staffing. So we hope that that will continue that, as well as one of the other highlights in terms of improvements in the process in many of the agreements, is the refinement of the language on the ability to choose an arbitrator. And we have improved the language on that.
Thank you. This brings us to two settlement items. First is a settlement of Durchick versus City of Grand Rapids, and there's a resolution approving settlement. Commissioner Belichick?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. This is a resolution for, on the matter that came before us on August 12, 2025. The matter of Brian Durchick and Holly Durchick versus the City of Grand Rapids was a sewer backup property damage case, which presented to the city commission and was presented to us in closed session. In accordance with the recommendations made by council, settlement of this matter was recommended in the amount of $55,000. And the attached resolution is approving this in our packet.
Thank you. Any discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is a City Commission Resolution authorizing approval of a settlement within the Adriana Brown Risk Management Claim. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes, Mayor, on August 12, 2025, the above referenced matter with the city commission authorizing approval to settle the Adriana Brown Risk Management Claim is recommended in the amount of $17,128. This includes any and all claims arising from the June 5, 2025 incident described in Risk Management's Claim, Number 25RO206, and the supporting documentation and the resolution that we had approving the same.
Thank you. Any discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to ordinances to be adopted.
The first ordinance is an ordinance rezoning the easterly plus minus 60 feet of 1356 or 1356 Kalamazoo Avenue Southeast to the TNTBA Traditional Neighborhood Traditional Business Area Zone District.
Can I motion?
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Perdue?
Thank you. So regarding this item, it is a request to rezone the aforementioned property from one district to another to facilitate the development of a mixed-use commercial and residential development. Right now, the property at hand is located in two districts, and we, we're not really sure what the historic rationale is for this. Previously, a gas station occupied this site from the, from 1960 to the mid 70s, and the property has remained vacant since the building was demolished. Upon rezoning, a four, a new four-story mixed-use development will be constructed. And there's more information in the packet. And I will note that this was unanimously passed by the Planning Commission on July 10.
Thank you. Any discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. So City Clerk?
Commissioner Belichick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Brings us to our next ordinance.
It's a salary ordinance amending Section 4.3 of Ordinance 2022-32, range changes for Electrical Inspector 1 and Electrical Inspector 2.
Can I motion?
So.
Support.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This ordinance is coming before us as a result of the Building Inspections Department requesting some amendments to the salary ordinance specifically for the Electrical Inspector 1 and 2 roles. Just with the advancement of technology, it's a highly technical role in just to prevent turnover, increase retention, and maintain the level of skills that are needed for this type of work, they requested for the range to be reassessed. So rather than reading the specific numbers, I'll just note that the, both the old and the new ranges are within the memo for comparison.
Thank you. Any discussion, colleagues? Commissioner Usasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this was an item that was reviewed as well at our Civil Service Board. I'll also note that, just to highlight, thanks to the HR Department for making sure that this was on our agenda. We'll probably continue to see items around the inspections. I know a number of us have gotten calls. We've, we had a fiscal item last, last time we met about additional resources. So just appreciate the work to get this over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, City Clerk, oh, let's see, I think, I think, do I need them? No.
I gotta do mine first.
Roll call first, yep.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Belichick?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion then that carries? Can I have a motion to give immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is a salary ordinance amending Sections 3.1 and 3.2 of Ordinance 2022-40, new classification, paralegal and range change utilities director.
Commissioner Knight? Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes, we are currently looking at a new classification for our paralegal and range changes for the utilities director. The legal assistant position has evolved and cuts have been made to the attorney's office. The assistant positions have transitioned into more paralegal roles with added responsibilities. And so the department is requesting a classification of the paralegal to better articulate the responsibilities in the department, and the other language is in the document.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote again.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Belichick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a salary ordinance for the Grand Rapids Emergency Communications Operators.
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Kilgore?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance will implement the provisions of the labor agreement reached between the City of Grand Rapids and the Grand Rapids Emergency Communications Operators. This ordinance provides to the following wage increases: a 4% increase on July 1 of 2025, a 3% increase on July 1 of 2026, and lastly, a 2% increase on July 1 of 2027.
This is a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
No, we did.
No, those are immediate consideration.
Because it's a first time reading.
Yeah.
So can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all in favor of immediate effect, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next one's a salary ordinance for employees represented by the Grand Rapids Employees Independent Union.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And Commissioner Belichick?
Next one's a salary ordinance for employees represented by the Grand Rapids Employees Independent Union.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And Commissioner Belcheck?
So this is the, the ordinance that will implement the provisions of the labor agreement that we just reached between the city of Grand Rapids and the Grand Rapids Employees Independent Union. The ordinance provides for the following wage increases: 4% July 1st, 2025 effective date, 4% July 1st, 2026, and 4% in July 1st, 2027. This agreement also has an added pay step and additional 10 years of service after one year in that role. I think I said that wrong. Employees after 10 years of service will be eligible for an additional step. So the additional information is in our packet if you wish to see the numbers.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. City clerk?
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Next one's a salary ordinance for employees represented by the Grand Rapids Officers Association, crime scene technicians, latent print examiners.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Knight?
And this is another in the long list. This is ordinance that will implement the provisions of the labor agreements reached between the city of Grand Rapids, crime scene technicians, latent print examiners, and the following documentation are found in your packet.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
The next one's a salary ordinance for the Grand Rapids Police Command Officers Association.
So.
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Similarly, this is, would implement the provisions of the labor agreement specifically between the city and then the Grand Rapids Police Command Officers Association. So three years, the increase takes place on July 1st of each year, starting this, this past month. Those increases will be 5%, 4% and then 2% respectively.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Belcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And finally, finally, salary ordinance for the Grand Rapids Police Officers Association, officer and sergeant unit.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support. It's a roll call vote. City clerk?
Commissioner Usasi?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Usasi.
Yes.
No, no, you have to explain.
Oh, my item. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you guys.
Long day.
A little out of it today. My apologies. So this item is a continuation of.
Oh, thank you. This item is the continuation, as noted, of all the labor agreements. This one in particular is with GRPOA. Over the next three years of the contract, each year we'll have a 4% increase. Additionally, it eliminates the pay step. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
This is a roll call vote. City clerk?
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck?
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand?
Yes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And this brings us to public hearings and thank you for staying this long, Commissioner Usasi.
So our first public hearing is to consider a noise variance request by the Michigan Department of Transportation in connection with MLK Bridge replacement east of the 131. And our city engineer is here.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So MDOT is planning to replace the eastern portion of the Martin Luther King Jr. Bridge, really going from the on-off ramps of northbound 131 east to Buchanan. That work is scheduled in 2026. In order to complete the work in one construction season, work around two active rail lines, they've requested a noise variance to allow certain operations to occur at night up to 45 nights between March 30th of 2026 and November 20th of 2026. Extremely loud operations like sheet pile driving would still be prohibited at night, but the city's control ordinance, noise control ordinance prohibits major construction activity between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM within 600 feet of residents or hospitals, with the exception of essential services. And while most essential services that are listed in the ordinance are construction-related activities, major highway construction involving bridge reconstruction is not specifically cited. So that brings us here to you today to hold this public hearing of necessity. A notification has been sent out to property owners within 600 feet of this proposed project and staff from the MDOT Grand Region are here as well to help answer any questions that may come up from you or following your hearing.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wanting to be heard on this issue is welcome to come up and speak. Seeing no one, anyone, any of my colleagues wish to speak on this? Seeing no one. This hearing is now closed and this is referred to community development. That brings us to our next public hearing. That's to consider an amendment to the Grand Rapids Brownfield Plan to include Breton Meadows Redevelopment Project located at 4325 Breton Road Southeast and Ms., not Ms. Renaro.
This is Mackenzie Miller from our Economic Development Department.
Ms. Miller, if you want to walk us through this.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. As mentioned, my name is Mackenzie Miller with the Economic Development Department. We're excited to bring forward this project known as the Breton Meadows Redevelopment Project, which will be the demolition of the existing Family Fair Grocery Store building that is on the corner of 44th and Breton, for those that might be familiar, and then construction of seven multifamily apartment buildings, which will total 168 residential units. Eighty-four of those will be one bedrooms, eighty-four will be two bedrooms, and eighty-two of those, so about 49% of the units, are expected to be priced for households earning at or below, some are 95% area median income for Kent County and some are 100. And so that will be for the length of the Brownfield Plan, which is 25 years. So we're very excited to see those numbers. All, in totality, the project is $36 million in total project cost, total 28 million of those being hard construction. And we do see some significant inclusion plan goals as well for this project, about 15% or 4.2 million of the 28 million in construction costs. And you can see on the slide that those are broken out between MBE, WBE and MLBE. I did want to highlight one error that is on the slide. This project is not located in Roosevelt Park neighborhood. It's actually in Millbrook Neighborhood Association, so my apologies for the error. So this project is specifically coming in for the housing tax increment financing program. So about $14.85 million in eligible activity costs, 25 years of affordability for those 82 income, excuse me, income qualified units that I had mentioned. And so the rent loss, which is the housing eligible activity for keeping those units within those price ranges for 25 years is approximately 12.1 million or about 148,000 per unit. Construction is anticipated for fall of 2025 and completion in December of 2027. So I do have Scott Weirda from the development team alongside Jared Belka to help answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any members of the public wishing to be heard on this? State your name again for us.
Hi, Aiden Wisaki, resident in the second ward. I saw this project, this, well, this site come to this committee, no, it was the Community Development Committee back in May. They weren't quite sure what the future was going to hold for this project and it seems, just from the renderings, I can tell it's, it seems like a great use of the Brownfield Act and I'm looking forward to see the progression on this. So I, I would say I support this.
Thank you. Seeing a couple gentlemen coming up to the front. Go ahead. I'll wait for you. I know.
Good afternoon. I'm Jared Belka with Warner, Norcross and Judd here with Scott Weirda and Spencer Weirda, part of the development team. Just wanted to say that, and I'll let Scott speak for it, we're here to answer any specific questions related to plan itself. Just to be very brief, this was a project site that the development team, and Scott will touch on it, had considered alternate uses given the vacancy at the site, including self-storage. The passage of the amendment to Act 381 that included the housing activities gave them pause to step back and look at something more impactful. So what you have before you is a direct result of that. So we appreciate Mackenzie and the rest of the Economic Development Team's efforts in working with us to put this together and before you. Happy to answer any questions. I'll let Scott speak briefly about their broader vision. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Scott Weirda. I think I know some of you, several of you, but I met you over the years. I've been investing and developing for about the past 35 years with a couple of different entities. I started in 1995 with a company called Jade Big Ventures, where we were primarily in shopping centers and mixed use and including this, this particular site. So we've owned this for 26 years or so. So I've seen a lot of cycles with this particular site. Partner in CWD Downtown, so heavily invested in the, the urban core in the city. And most recently, I started a company kind of in the, as I like to say on the back nine of my career, with my son. So he moved back with his wife recently from Chicago, where he had been involved in over 3,000 apartment units kind of around the, mainly around the south, southwest and southeast part of the United States, but brings that experience back and he's very, very passionate about this particular sector. So it's caught my attention. And, and I think the, a lot of these programs in, in the housing, the reason we have this, as you all know, is, is just a particular gap that's been created to, to make these things affordable. And this new program and making residential TIF eligible is something that will move the needle. And, and Spencer and I are committed to, to doing that. And with this site sitting vacant for so many years, my business partner, Brian Drees, and I started looking at this. And, and as Jared mentioned initially, we had a special use permit to turn that into some self-storage. But as we've gotten into this, and that was in fact approved, but kind of in the planning side, we decided to, to, to move this forward. It's an entirety. So we're excited to, to do that and, and happy to answer any questions. And, and, you know, assuming things go well, we do intend to be back in front of you on some other sites, probably in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. Well, I'll just kick off by saying this is obviously exciting. This is a real bite at the total housing need. You're not going to solve all of it for us in one project, but really appreciate this. I'm glad that some of the tools are available, but really, really good to see some more housing stock going in. So thanks for, thanks for engaging on this and, and moving one step closer to a win. You're not there yet. You haven't broken ground, right?
I think we're going to start pretty soon. We'll probably do demo in October and start construction in November if approved.
Awesome. I mean, I, I'll tell you, you know, surface parking lot, it's, I'm going to be a little sad to not see a big pile of asphalt down there, but anyway, so thank you.
We're on the same page there.
Yeah. So any other comments, colleagues? Commissioner Knight?
Yeah, it's, it's really great to see this. Yes, Lord.
He's spoken.
Probably should be done then. Just, just graceful to see this project come as we continue to have conversations around different spaces in our community. And I, I remember hearing a conversation, I think for some Kentwood Commissioners about that being a storage area. And I was like, man, that would be a total loss for that space. So I'm really glad that, and hopefully that things will be able to continue to move forward and, and that some people will be able to be housed at some reasonable costs.
And obviously, this is on a great transit corridor. So like, these are, these are really, it's a really well-connected site. So that's, it's exciting to see. This is exactly where we, I think we all think housing got to go, places that are on transit corridors that can, you know, make for other alternates for people to get around town. So any other comments? Commissioner Belcheck?
This is not a question I normally ask, but you are here and personable. And what are some of your favorite things about this particular development and why you moved? I mean, I understand you wanted to move from storage to this, but you know, I'm looking at the, the plan and just wondering, any particular features you want to tell us about?
The, the building, well, I mean, the, the project itself, you know, does include roughly 49% for the attainable housing. So that was certainly an important component. The, the, will include kind of a community building that will have fitness and, and meeting room and things like that, as well as onsite dog park and grilling stations. But more, I'm not going to say that's out of the norm. That's, that is, I think, what should be expected on stuff like this. But it's more that, you know, this is a site that's been underperforming for years and the building's sat vacant for years. And I think as we look at kind of the broader picture of how do we address this, and I think the mayor just touched on it, but you know, sites on bus corridors, commercial corridors like this that have some functional obsolescence actually do provide really interesting opportunities. And, and that's kind of what caught our, our attention. And, and frankly, what shifted it is probably my son's perspective, coming in there and, and just giving us a little different way of looking at it. And, and frankly, really understanding it. I can probably do shopping centers with my eyes closed, but you know, this is a new, fresh look at it and, and frankly, it, it will work. So.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thanks. We're going to, I'm going to close the hearing and refer this to committee of the whole. That brings us to our next public hearing and this is to consider a revised amendment to the city Grand Rapids Brownfield Plan for the 280 Ann Redevelopment Project. And take it away, Ms. Miller.
Hello again. Excited to bring forward a revised Act 31 Brownfield Plan Amendment. As noted, this particular project located at 280 Ann Northwest was approved by city commission back in November of 2022 and has since come back to include the housing eligible activities as a part of Act 381. The plan was approved and is, remains the same to support construction of a new four-story, 2,600 square foot mixed-use addition to the existing office building that's located at 280 Ann Street, right on downtown Grand Rapids on the riverfront. So this project includes 44 residential units and consisting a mix of studio and one-bedroom units with ground floor retail space and common area square footage as well. As I mentioned before, a breakdown of these 44 units include 10 of the studios that are expected to be priced for households earning at or below 85% of area median income and five for households at or below 95% of area median income. So that, you know, roughly gets us about 35% for the period of the Brownfield Plan, which is really exciting. And 11.7 million in total project costs, 8.2 of those being in construction. And this amendment is requesting those additional eligible housing activities, which is roughly 3.6 million in potential rent loss. And so Jared Belka is here on behalf of the project alongside Jack Hodeman, the development team. So they're happy to answer any questions that you might have about this revised amendment that's coming before you.
Any members of the public want to, you can certainly come up if you want to talk now, but I don't see any members of the public leaping up.
Hello, Jared Belka with Warner, Norcross, working with Jack Hodeman, the developer. I just want to touch on a couple of things that probably are questions about, you know, why are we back before you? The project was approved in 2022. They had commenced some site work and ran into some soil issues that were, were unknown prior to commencement of that. In addition, there became some access issues with the neighboring property owner that put the project on hold. So the project, since then, Jack and his team have acquired the adjoining property. You may have seen in, in cranes or MLive. They have a broader vision for that entire, we'll call it campus. What's before you is phase one of that campus, the original 44 units. And obviously, the amendment to Act 381, since the time of original approval of his project, interest rates and construction costs have unfortunately gone up. But also, given Act 381, it's provided them the opportunity to address some of that attainable housing with your support. So those are, those are the tweaks that Mackenzie outlined. And again, I really appreciate the, the work that the Economic Development Office has done to get us here before you. So I'll step back, let Jack talk about, he'll shed some light on the grander vision. Again, what we have before you today is for phase one.
I'm not going to sound nearly as good as Scott. I'm certainly not dressed as well either, but thank you so much for your time here today. Really excited about this project. Been working on it for several years, not only as housing, of course, very important, but having attainable market rate housing that also has a one-acre green space that's on the water. I think that this is a perfect opportunity to allow people in Grand Rapids to have more access to, to the waterfront. So I think this is a very, very special property, which ideally, we're still working on the total campus project and, and rolling out some different scenarios there. But you know, having the more than 1,000 feet of frontage on the Grand River with all the activation that you're doing, as I was recently in Milwaukee and just seeing what they do with the water activation in Milwaukee and with Madison and the potential that's there, I hope everybody's, is half as excited as I am about, about the opportunity. So these credits are absolutely making these projects pencil. And so I really appreciate you, your, your time, effort and energy on, on helping to bring this over the finish line for us. And of course, if you have any questions.
Yeah, thanks. It's also great, both these last couple of projects, I'll just say, to see mixed income levels because having people of different income strata rubbing shoulders with each other on a daily basis is, there's all kinds of good studies that show how important that is for building community, keeping our community integrated. And we all unfortunately can have a tendency to bubble and to just hang around with a specific set or another specific set. So that's certainly true economically as much as anything else. So I'm really glad to see that there's a, there's going to be a mix of incomes in, in both of these last two projects. So thanks. Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just one quick question. So from the renderings, I can't quite tell. So is there parking under most of the building itself too?
There is not.
Oh, okay.
We, we originally had contemplated that and it was well over a million dollars to.
I see. Okay.
To put the parking underneath. That was part of the benefit of acquiring the hotel next door is there's, there's already like north of 240 parking spots. So having those cross parking agreements with the greater campus allowed us to not have to spend the million dollars on the parking ramp.
Sure. Okay. Cause I know there's an office building, I think, a little further south between the river and 131 that had that same parking underneath arrangement. So I didn't know if that was like a site structure, I don't know, limitation or something. But yeah, just, just curious.
That was certainly an inspiration of us looking with that. And Ted Lot at Lot 3 Matt's is definitely a talented architect. And we, we moved that Rubik's Cube around to see if we could make that happen. And.
Sure, sure.
The juice wasn't worth the squeeze.
No worries. Yeah, just curious. No, I'm, I'm super excited about this project. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other comments? Otherwise, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll refer this to, pardon me, I'll close the hearing and refer it to committee of the whole. This brings us to, I believe, our final hearing and this is regarding Mobile GR's use of equipment for parking data collection. It falls in the definition of surveillance equipment. And having been in the hearing on this, essentially what we're talking about is using drones to look at parking usage. And Ms. Smith is here from Mobile GR. Not from IT.
Afternoon, Commissioners. While Santi's bringing that presentation up, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Jessica Smith, the Mobile GR Director, and I have a couple[1781.33] of friends with me here today. I have Brandon Davis from Office of Equity Engagement and Office of Public Accountability, as well as Max Dillivan, who is a planner on this project and is the project manager. So today, we just want to talk with you quickly about the overview of the project that's using this data, and then also some of the proposed operational management protocols that, that we would be working with on this kind of data collection, and then show you a couple of examples of what that data would look like when we're done. I want to hand this over to Max to give you a couple of details.
All right. Thank you. Just want to give you a brief introduction of this project and why we're coming to you this afternoon to request this utilization of drone technology is we're going to be evaluating all parking data, specifically downtown, for the, what we're calling the parking investment strategy. One of the major goals is collecting on-street data of our on-street parking assets that the city manages and operates. And to do that, the most efficient way, and a way that we can ensure privacy, is to utilize unmanned aerial devices, i.e. drones. And that will allow us to understand both the current parking utilization, as well as start to forecast future demand for parking throughout our downtown. The whole goal of this project is to develop kind of sustainable strategies to ensure that our parking fund is in the black, not the red, and also to examine a suite of solutions that will allow us to allow folks to shift modes and reduce that demand for signal occupancy vehicle parking. So what are, we're hiring consultants, or we have hired consultants, OHM and Quantify. They are proposing to collect and use overhead aerial imagery to determine parking capacity and total utilization, turnover and dwell time in parking facilities within the downtown Development Authority boundary. Basically, these drones will fly up to around 300 to 400 feet above ground level and snap static images. They will not be taking any video recordings. These are just static images with a very high-resolution camera, which I'll be showing some examples later on in this presentation. And we're going to be conducting this over a three-week period and taking snapshots throughout the downtown in morning, afternoon, early evening and late nighttime. This data is purposefully limited for, for good reason. Some of the information that's captured includes simply the vehicle's position in a parking facility or on-street parking space, the color of that vehicle, and that will allow the program to ascertain whether there's been turnover or how long a vehicle has dwelled in that particular space. This gives us a sense of the total number of vehicles in, within a parking facility to determine capacity and utilization. What's not collected are license plates, vehicle identification numbers, or any other sort of personal identifiable aspect of a vehicle at all. These are the type of things that would be collected as part of a in-person manual count. To note, lastly, that neither Mobile GR nor any other city staff will receive the raw imagery, will only be receiving heat maps of parking utilization, charts and graphs. I already touched on the anonymization. We won't be needing to get details on, on vehicles or individual license plates. There's a certain higher quality of data that's important here is that we can take snapshots rather than actually having to physically maneuver around downtown. We can simply get one snapshot for one point in time, and we can compare apples to apples over time and over days of weeks as well. So to show you just a couple of examples, this was provided by our consultants at OHM and Quantify. This particular image, it was taken in Sheldon Park in Livonia with the same resolution that will be deployed as part of our effort. As you can see, there's no real identifiable features, and it's simply going to be counting the vehicles and, and how many of those are open spaces or occupied spaces, and whether they've been turned over over time. This is another example, what we call an orthomosaic, sort of a stitching together of those captured images. And there's sort of a symbology applied to the streets to show where there's available parking or where parking is constrained.
So thanks for the presentation. If anyone from the public wants to come up with a comment, and Hal, as you're coming up, I did ask at Public Safety whether these things only pointed straight down, because there are a couple of buildings in town that are about 300 feet tall, and the answer is they only point straight down. So they won't be looking in your bedroom.
Hi, I'm Brooke Clement. I'm the Director of the Gerald Darford Presidential Library and Museum. And just looking at the, the layout of what parking lots are going to be surveyed, I just want to point out that the parking lots on both the south and north side of the museum are of federal property, and therefore, we would need prior FAA approval before any drones fly over those spaces.
Hal Frut and First Ward. When you're doing these flyovers to look at lots, the dash lots are surface lots, and I'll talk about other lots and later in public comment. But there is no signage telling people where a dash lot is when they come into the city, such as if you're coming in from the suburbs to go to an event, there is no large signage telling people where the dash lots are. I would think that would be something of advantage, because that's a revenue capture. If people are parking at a dash lot, they're spending money to the city. So if we're going to look at surface lots, signage may be a good thing to do. I'll speak about other lots later, but it's not really germane to this one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say, I don't see whatsoever is the benefit. What do we get out of it? How does this help? Sounds like you've got a department with a big budget that you're using to get a bunch of footage. Let me tell you, people actually don't like drones in the sky. People actually don't like feeling surveilled. What are we even getting out of it? Now, I hesitate to ask the question, because I know they're going to get up and explain it. But no, I don't think this is great. I don't think this is good. I don't, I haven't heard a single thing about like, okay, so then what? So what's, so we know where people are parking. So then what returns to the city? Like, how does this help anybody who's vulnerable in this city that y'all got these pictures? I get that you're gonna do it anyway. Yeah, but no, I don't think people want this. I don't think it's worth it. I think it's dumping money down the drain. I think instead of doing things like caring for the homeless, or those who are actually vulnerable in the community, we're pushing money around departments. They got plenty of money to waste their time making it a more of a surveillance state. That's how I feel. Take that.
Mark Back. You should think about this. They could say, it could be, they could say it's not going to be for surveillance use. But once again, you put them in the wrong hands, it's going to be, bad things are going to happen. So think about it. And come up with some, and come up with some, some type of plan where this could be used responsibly and in the right way. Because if not, you might have a lot of angry residents that's going to come up here and face y'all. And it won't be pretty. Thank you.
Colleagues, any comments or questions? Commissioner Perdue and Commissioner Belichick. I'll, I'll let you polite it off. Go ahead.
We just polited it off. Okay. So I appreciate the conversation. I also paid attention to when this was presented at Public Safety. So there was another discussion and another overview of some of this information. And just so the public understands, that means that other citizens got to look at this information and ask questions. I do think that there were some questions asked at Public Safety that maybe you didn't quite touch on during your conversation here today that might be worth talking about. I think one of the questions had been about how long the data would be kept, by whom, what the security of that was. I know you mentioned that it was anonymized, so that would be a little bit more information, be helpful there. And a little more discussion around the purpose for doing this, as was mentioned by one of our neighbors here. But my question, as we think about this kind of stuff and think about the investment, and you know, we're doing it now before the soccer stadium's built, before the amphitheater's finished, what's the, what's the next step, the next plan to see what happens after those are built? Maybe we could touch on that a little bit and just discuss that.
Ms. Smith, I don't know if you want to come up, maybe answer that?
Sure. Thank you for your question. The data is kept by the consultants, and it's kept in their, in their servers, in a secure server. We receive the bits that we need, and we keep them here on our, our city servers on our retention schedule. And that's
And, and the ultimate purpose of this is to, what's the, what was the purpose of doing this?
Sure. So we've done parking counts for many years, and we do them, as Max was talking about, manually. So that's where you drive around and you actually count cars, or, or we look at Google Earth images. So those are also static images. But those are images that are kind of a, a point in time that we don't have any control on. Over, this is a technology that we can have basically a Google image that we've customized, right? We take that snapshot in time, and we're able to do things like do that occupancy and that, and the, the occupancy counts at a time when we know it was taken and what time of day. And that's, that's planned for based on when we're looking at like peak times for parking versus times that aren't so busy. And the reason we do this is because we want to see what the occupancy is in our surface lots and our on-street parking, so I can let y'all know how well it's utilized. We don't have really a way to do that without, without going out and, and counting in some way. So that's what we use parking counts for. So this is kind of a modern technology to do something that we've been doing in the past manually.
Thanks. And if I can get a follow-up question before Commissioner Perdue. So hypothetically, let's say if you determined that we had, you know, 20% occupancy at peak time in a big surface lot downtown, you might be able to come to us and say, well, you know, that could be a spot for housing or development, because it's really underutilized parking, for example, right?
Correct. So the parking investment strategy, this is the data that we're looking at on the surface lots. And the parking investment strategy is a, an action plan, if you will, put together to help us be able to make decisions in different types of investment for the parking system. Or like the mayor was talking about, maybe you might invest in that surface lot in another way. It may not be the highest and best use of that land use in that area in your city for it to be a surface lot.
Thanks. And Commissioner Perdue, you had a question?
Did you have a follow-up? I just, did you answer the question about snapshots now, before the infrastructure projects, and then after?
Great question. I'm so sorry, I forgot that. So this is, this is your, your thinking ahead. So this might be a snapshot now. In the future, if we find that, you know, the park, we're not able, you know, parking management, if there are any challenges after things like our big transformational projects are, are built, this is a way that we could go back and say, okay, what's happening? It may be that our occupancy is, is super high, right? So you've got so many folks trying to park in your surface and street spaces that you can make some other decisions about how to manage the parking system. Does that help without getting real detailed about parking operations, which I know is a, is everyone's favorite conversation, but we might not have enough time today?
Thanks. Commissioner Perdue?
It's kind of a little bit in that same vein and in really seeking to switch from manual to more automated. How often do you do the utilization study? And is that your, your planned timeframe in the future? I know for this one, it's like three snapshots. But talk a little bit about your schedule.
Sure. So the last time the utilization study was done on surface and street parking in downtown was in 2010, 2015, in the, the GR Forward Plan. That was the last time there was a parking mobility study. We've had a few things changed since then. So I wanted to pursue some updated data collection.
Thank you. And so I guess my question now is to city manager, is what's in front of us, doesn't have the specific language in our packet. What's the exact decision that will come in front of us? Is it, is it specific to this, this cycle of surveying? Is it using this technology for all surveying going forward?
No. Yeah, this is, this is tightly limited to, they are, they need permission, if I can just jump in here. And Mr. Davis, you can do this, too. But basically, discreet study needs, we're going to be using drones. There's a very tight policy that was developed around drone usage, so they have to come and ask for permission for this study. If you want to add anything, Mr. Davis.
So good afternoon. Administrative Policy 1503 is the city surveillance policy. It was designed or redesigned in partnership with the NAACP a few years back. Essentially, what it says now is that there are several steps in the process in order for a city department to use or acquire surveillance equipment or surveillance technology. So Mobile GR is following this policy exactly correct, and I appreciate that, by doing this. The first step is for them to take their desired use to the Public Safety Committee, which sits at the Committee on Surveillance. When they take it to the Public Safety Committee, they go through all of the Fourth Amendment challenges, right? Like, is this, could this be volutive of someone's Fourth Amendment right? Or how does this influence their privacy rights and things of that nature? All of those safeguards have to be put into place at that time. So those things are discussed with the Public Safety Committee. And at the Public Safety Committee, they request the opportunity to have a, what is this? A public hearing. Thank you. To have a public hearing. And that public hearing is then set before the City Commission. Today, we're here for that public hearing. After the public hearing today, the next step is then to go before fiscal. So that, it goes before fiscal for permission to utilize the funds for that purpose. At that time, obviously, it goes on consent. And ultimately, this body will have the opportunity to approve or not approve the use of that technology. But it's limited to the use that is described for the purposes of this. You know, also go on the list that's kept on the city's page to say it's been approved for this limited purpose.
So will we come, it was correct that it'll come just for this particular cycle of study?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Knight?
Thank you for that presentation and that description, Mr. Davis, because I think I remember when that language had been tweaked to really put some safeguards around when we first introduced drones, if I'm not mistaken, right? So I'm glad to see how this process is working, because I know that was a lot of the questions that we got from community members when the conversation about drones being used in our community first came up. So thank you for that. Just a question, because you said the next step is going to go before fiscal. Where is that money coming from to support this project?
Sure. This is a, from the parking fund.
Okay.
Cool. Commissioner Kogor?
Follow-up question to that, and hopefully our last one. I apologize to you all, but I do need, I have gotten questions about this. Is, am I correct with the price tag is like $180,000?
That's for the entire investment study. So that's a, that's a broad, year-long study. This is the data collection portion, just for the on-street. We've already done data collection for your off-street, because I have systems in place. You know, every time you go in and out of a parking garage, I, we can count your car. So for the on-street and the lots, it's a little bit differently. It's, it's done a little bit differently. And so that cost is about $30,000 of the $180,000 dedicated to the project.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thanks. Seeing no further questions, I am going to refer this to committee of the, sorry, I'm going to close the hearing. Do I refer it to committee of the whole? I don't. It's going to go to fiscal. Okay, thank you. This brings us to public comments on anything the public wants to discuss with us. And I'm seeing Mr. Jones come up, but John, it looks like you're first. Almost have a mic.
Hello. I'm John. I lived in Grand Rapids for about 20 years. I want to, the reason I came today in particular was to talk about the sanctuary policies, which we discussed two weeks ago. And there was some discussion after the thing. I think, hmm, the vulnerable people in this community, the vulnerable immigrants in this community humbly come before you and ask for a particular way that they're seeking help. And I think that's really important. You know, I'm a community organizer. You figure out how to do the work. And how to do the work turns out to be listen to the vulnerable people and try to meet their requests. Listen to the affected community and try to meet their requests. We have to be careful in city government, or general, or all-white people with a sort of paternalistic attitude, an attitude of, oh, I know better than. Okay, this vulnerable community, they're asking for this, but really, I think we ought to do something else. That's not the way to do the work. That's the way to continue white supremacy. That's the way to continue to neglect the most vulnerable in the community. The homeless in our community are always neglected, always neglected, always neglected. The immigrants in our community came to this meeting and in an act of civil disobedience, made a, a real stink, right? It's in the tradition of sit-ins at lunch counters. It's in the tradition of sit-ins at lunch counters. It's in the tradition of not moving from the front of the bus. You know, 40 people came and raised their voices and some commissioners didn't even speak on it one way or another. There are specific policies. They've asked for it. It's what they're saying they need. Stand with it, stand against it, or work with us to get it done. David Legrand has a letter in his office on his wall that he's proud of from conservatives saying, Grand Rapids and David Legrand, they're trying to make it a sanctuary city. And he's so proud that these white conservatives think that he's a liberal progressive standing for immigrants. But the immigrants in this community don't think that you are standing for immigrants because they are telling you what to do and you're not doing it. You're not doing it. Use your voices, make it clear where you stand. If you think it was wrong that Ned got arrested, say so. If Ned and Victor didn't deserve to be arrested, say so. You don't have the ability to waive your magic wand, to drop these cases, but let us know where you stand with the people on these issues. Don't get it in your head that you're doing some great job caring for the neglected in this community. Justice for Patrick Leoya, justice for Samuel Sterling, justice for Riley Doggett, justice for Hank Weimer, justice for Joey Nagel, justice for Kai Price Sanders, Free Palestine. Those, history will remember those who remain silent, silent and complicit. Pay for the pipe that broke on my neighbor's darn flooded basements. The time is always right to do the right thing. Thanks for your time.
How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones. First of all, I wanted to give a shout out to my little brother. It's his birthday today, my youngest brother. So happy birthday. And then the funny thing, my mom and David Legrand have the same birthday. So happy early birthday, David. First of all, I want to, it's a little bit lighter, me speaking at City Hall. I gave y'all a handout. My first one is I was in Forbes. So I am the only person in this room besides the city government being a government that was on Forbes. And so as you guys know, I develop initiatives and youth initiatives. And I was on Forbes during the 2020 election when Joe Biden was actually elected president. I was so happy to see that we had a good president that actually cared about the community and the citizens. And I was on Forbes because I've been coming to City Hall for seven years consistently. Even once Anita Lannery was here and before David Ubeater, she was speaking about the Third War Equity Fund, which I 100% completely support. I do believe that good things come from that. I do want to speak to you guys about the lack of communication in some things when we develop partnerships. I appreciate you guys still willing to consider me as a future partner with the things I've been through and the thing, the trauma that my family has been going through because it was a traumatic situation. And I just want you guys to start using the city's communication and Facebook page to start pushing these initiatives. Because people should know if you guys are investing in the community, y'all should use the same social platforms. When I'm speaking, hearing Davis do the new things, when he's speaking about the CAA plan, which I'm a part of that. I got some fun 10 grand from C4. I did an esports competition at the National Guard base where they allowed me to come in there and I educated pollute them, the community about the armed services being the largest polluter in, in America. And then I also did an esports competition at the Forest Star Theater, which is now being revitalized. And I'm happy for that. But I brought six electric vehicles and solar panels, which my friend Larry Aaron actually gave me the solar panel to educate people. So I have played a huge part in that. Also with the stuff with the Forbes and then I gave you guys a cool picture. I am a Jordan R. Ford Fellow. I was at the Jordan R. Ford birthday. So I actually have an official Jordan R. Ford Presidential Picture, which is pretty cool because my birthday is four days before Jordan R. Ford. Then I gave you guys a nice big picture of the esports finals that I was at in the University of Flint, Michigan. If you guys see that picture, these esports competitions are very huge and we're going to bring that to the DeVos Place, colleges and universities across the nation. So when we speak about equity, it was a larger vision besides the summer program. Sorry that people didn't show up and everything else, but I promise you, I poured all the love energy and did everything I could. I need better communication from the school district too, because I'm bringing the best colleges and universities and they fell in me too. But also the last slide is the slide for the GR Comic-Con. So you guys see the larger, grander vision. I know we're going to do beautiful things in the future. Thank you.
How, fruit, first ward. It's unfortunate that the parking group has left since that's what I'm talking about. But I sent some communication to both of my, all right, good. Both my first ward commissioners, and I'm sure they'll pass it along to the rest of you. Signage for parking to downtown in the ramps is non-existent. Give an example. The ramps on Fulton, right across from the arena. If you're coming into the city down Division, so you're going south on Division and you're at Fulton, you have no idea that there's two large parking ramps just to the right of you going west on Fulton. Why? Because there is no signage at Division and Fulton telling you that there are city ramps two blocks away. If you're coming into the city on Michigan, you have no idea that there is a government parking ramp just to the right across from DeVos Place. Why? Because there is no signage. How does this affect the city? It's revenue. Where are people parking? In Ellis's private lots. He's getting all your money. So I would suggest putting up some signage, especially with the arena coming or the amphitheater coming in and a soccer stadium coming in. Let's get people into the city ramps, not Ellis's or the private ones. So a little signage might help. The other thing I passed along, and this may be for the engineers, the traffic engineers. Look at an intersection Pearl and Monroe. If you're going south on Monroe, try making a right turn on Pearl Street during traffic, when a lot of pedestrians are walking. There's something known as an X crosswalk. What happens on that is all traffic stops and people can walk in any direction they want. Once everybody has crossed, I know there's a certain time that you have to give people to walk. Once that's done, all the no-walk signs go on and traffic can move. It's a heck of a lot more efficient. So let's maybe get the traffic engineers to look at some stuff, get into the 21st century and maybe we can get some additional revenue also in our parking ramps. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Commission. My name is Vanessa Epps. I'm in the third ward. However, my concern about these drones, I believe, and I heard the, the different changes that'll be made for our police and their salary that they're getting. Now, I understand they have some drones in place and if I'm wrong, please correct me. However, I hear from another city that they use the stun gun. They use a stun gun to get a person that killed some people, if I'm not mistaken, Houston, Texas. But here, we use whatever means necessary that we feel, oh, because I felt scared. They get away with what they got away with and get that erased from their records. I wonder if this city commission might consider taking away the drones and let's get some stun guns so we don't lose another life just because and somebody can walk away free without anything on their record, to say the least, what they did. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission, Commissioners and Mayor and other appointees. Thank you again for the push on the cap. Grateful that that is moving forward and I'm hoping that we will see the benefits and be part of the implementation. So I want to ask you to please consider us when you think about contracting and who to contract. Because as an underserved person in an underserved community, two, to be exact, the first ward and the third ward, I want to say that we are looking and seeking these opportunities to make and bring improvements to our communities. We talk about seeking young talent from elsewhere. There's so much talent here that has not been sought after. And I'm really asking for you to invest and take a real opportunity to see who they are. You know, take ownership of what's here with, with what we, you know, with the changes we want to see happen. And the other thing I want to ask is that we take a deeper dive into the data that already exists that's sitting on the shelf because we're using the drones again to collect some more data. How long are we going to use that data? How long is it going to sit paying all that money? We have hungry people out here. Things are changing. Families need to be resourced with opportunities and funding for other things. A lot of funding is being cut. So I really encourage us to think about where those dollars are going and how they're being used. We don't want them just sitting on the shelf. We have so much data. So I encourage you all to take some time and look at the data that already exists, right? We talk about drones. I had a drone come up to my home, 521 Church Place in June. My husband and I were sitting on the porch and I know it was a police drone. For what? I wish it would have went over my property. It did not. It went right, right around. It stared at us. And, and I'm like, what, what are they doing? So I feel like when, when it comes to the drones, they're being misused, especially by the police department. And you're increasing their dollars? For what? They're misusing the funds and the people. So I'm going to ask you to really think about how you allocate the dollars, what, what you approve. You're in power to make some great changes. Please take advantage of it. Thank you.
Mark back again. Well, the orange felon has done it again. He wants to make, he's going to try to, he's going to make Washington DC basically his own personal playground. Not only he's going to try to write roughshod over the police department, he's bringing in National Guard and more than likely active-duty military to come in and wreak havoc all over the city. Just because some zit-written teenager got, got whooped after he became macho and provoked individuals to the point where he had physical. And it resulted in him getting the crap kicked out of him. The numbers he put up during his, during his press conference are nothing but a bunch of lies. Because believe it or not, crime in DC is down. But according to him, he thinks that everybody is, he thinks that people are running rampant, which is not the case. And all those homeless people he talked, and all those homeless people, he goes zeroing in on them and trying to get them out by any means necessary. That's going to be, and that's going to continue, not just there, but all over the country. It's not good. But when a white guy shoots up the CDC building in the Atlanta area, which resulted in a black cop being killed, crickets. And the Director of Health out there fishing like nothing going on, only to come out saying some, some words two days later, too late for that. He has to be recalled immediately. Boycott Tesla.
Aiden Wasaki. I live on Lake Drive. I just had a few additional public comments I wanted to make regarding the statement I made at the beginning of the meeting. Regarding cap, I don't intend to come off harsh and critical of your decisions. And I'm, I'm grateful that you've approved the cap plan. It's, it's just that I've lived in the greater Grand Rapids area my whole life. I've never been away from greater Grand Rapids area for more than three weeks my entire life. I went to college at Kendall, College of Art and Design, studied industrial design there. And I understand products and how, how they're manufactured and buildings as well and how buildings are, the building materials are manufactured and made. And it's just that when I met John Hunting, who's funded much of the, the climate committees and, and made actions of his own to, to improve awareness of our climate, it's, it spurred me to, to think of how his family founded Steelcase and then he's moved on to, to make things right, you know, to, a company that literally has the name Steel in its name. And I, I'm a huge supporter of Steelcase. I, I love that, all the furniture and things that they've produced over the years and the history they've provided. It's, it's just that we need to be aware that times are changing. There, there's a direct correlation between steel production and carbon and carbon dioxide emissions. When we look at things like building materials, steel is the least climate-friendly. I mean, there's, there's other options. If you look out the window, you can see there's concrete, there's, there's glass, there's brick. I, I think that that's something we need to consider in the future. This cap that was provided today, it's free. It, it didn't cost you anything to approve that. It was, I know that was something you said, Commissioner Robbins, is that you are afraid of the costs and it's going to be something you can decide on each action in the future as, as it's brought before the commission. It's just today, we've made a step forward by approving the cap. And just, I don't know, I, I see the calder and it could be something that changes meaning in the future. If we look at that and see a hunk of steel and how the rise and fall of steel has really impacted cities. And it's, it's something that Mayor Legrand had said, that living in a city has a lower carbon footprint and, and we can improve that and make it an even lower carbon footprint, living in the city. So let's choose how we build our buildings wisely. And I, I'm really grateful for all the work that this commission has put forward. I'm, I'm really proud to live here in Grand Rapids and I'm thankful for the sum of the work of each of you. Thanks.
Seeing no further public comment, we'll move to comments from my colleagues. Commissioner Belichick?
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who participated in all the discussions. We've got a lot going on in the city. I'm very excited about the housing opportunities that we continue to see brought before us. I continue to want to ask all of our developer friends to really think about those people who are living and needing in housing in the 80% or less, not just the 85 and 95% or market rate. But it is great to see a couple hundred units being proposed right off the bat that will help us. And I think it's also really fitting to talk about developers that are doing great things in my own neighborhood. We've got a housing unit that the units are going to be up and running very soon, where the old Dufflers used to be off a bridge. And I want to elevate this as an example of how the Climate Action Plan that we were able to pass today fits with our housing because that housing development is going to actually install EV charging stations. Solar have a rooftop deck and garden overlooking the soccer stadium and bike racks and other things, as well as be part of a vibrant, walkable, amenity-rich community. And I know that's what our friends at the Chamber of Commerce want. I know it's what our neighborhood people want. We don't want to be going to 28th Street if we're living on the West Side. We want to be living and working and having zoning that matches being able to have mixed-use development inside our neighborhoods. I think that looking at our transportation and how we are developing. I think that looking at our transportation and how we are developing our city so that we can have corridors that are rich with business opportunities because we have transportation to them. We have so much opportunity and I think that as hard as it is to be talking about drones and surveillance state and all the concerns that we have, I actually think that our, um, transportation folks are looking very carefully at this information so that we can make a good plan. And I, um, I applaud the hard conversations that we're having around use of drones so that we can actually have good quality data to make parking and, um, other transportation choices. So I was, I'm just excited about where we're at. I think it's been a long summer already and conversations and I feel good that we are in a place where we can be looking forward to something new. And again, I'm focused on the future, the city of the future. That means resiliency. That means, um, clean air, clean water and opportunities economically, but also for us to have strong, safe neighborhoods. And that means we can stay and live where we want to live and play. So thank you.
Commissioner Perdue?
Thanks.
Commissioner Robbins?
Thanks, Mayor. I remember the, uh, the wise Commissioner John O'Connor one time said a year and a half ago, "It's never fun being on an island on a six-to-one vote." But I, I wouldn't do this job and I, um, yeah, it's, it's tough sometimes. You have to make some really hard decisions, but I appreciated the comment that was said by someone just about, you know, intentions being the same, you know, even amongst disagreements and sometimes the mechanism from getting from point A to point B, uh, isn't always the same amongst every single person's thoughts and opinions on this dies, but that's kind of the, the beautiful part of democracy too. So, um, just appreciated the discussion and always, um, I'm just impressed and appreciate the, the respect that we have for one another even amongst disagreement. So, uh, with that, have a good, rest your day.
Commissioner Knight. Commissioner Kogar. Great. Well, thank you everyone for coming. Um, and Commissioner Robbins, love you. I'm glad you're here, glad you're swinging for the fences. And I, you know, I, I really, really appreciate your integrity and your, the time and diligence you put into analyzing things and, uh, reasonable minds, uh, with good hearts can some, often come to different conclusions and that, um, certainly is a, I think are a reflection of your integrity. So thank you for, thank you for your dissenting vote today. I want to say, um, a couple things. Most importantly, I want to say, um, one of the things that I used to hear, I, a bad parenting bit of advice I always got was, "Well, it takes two people to argue." Well, no, sometimes there's just a bad actor who picks a fight. But it certainly does take two to come to an agreement. And so I want to thank not just our labor team that worked on all these, uh, agreements, but I want to thank all of the labor organizations that came to the table. And I know, having talked to many, many, many of them, that people who work for our city dominantly think of it as public service. They think of it as a way to make this community better. And I agree. I think they're right. Um, and so part of that is being willing to, with good faith, come to agreements about things that in other communities can be fractious. And, uh, so I'm really, really glad that we've gotten our labor agreements done amicably and, and I hope fairly. I think that one of the reasons you bargain is so that you can come to a place of, uh, it's, it's a way we try to get to fairness, but, um, that can't happen without goodwill and good intent on both sides of a bargaining table. Anything that's conflict-based can be kind of tricky and, uh, so I'm really, really impressed and glad. Uh, it's one of the things that makes me proud of the city. And I will just say that I was on this commission, uh, during the Great Recession. And I remember at that point, uh, the labor, uh, organizations really making concessions, really, really digging deep and, and, and taking on some of the pain of our city finances, um, at that time. And so I know from my lived experience that, um, we've got a great group of, uh, bargaining organizations who really, really are, A, trying to make sure we get to fair, but also have the city's best interest, um, in their hearts when they wake up in the morning and they go about their jobs. So that's me saying, that's just a love letter to everybody who works for the city. So thank you to all 3,000 of you, even those of you who don't agree with us about things, um, especially those of you who just don't agree with us about all things all the time because, um, we get better by empathetically discussing and learning and, um, working on things together. So thank you and, uh, thanks Hal to, I'm going to give you a shout out. What are you saying? I'm over my three minutes?
No, I just, I just said one thing.
Okay. Um, so I, I'm going to single you out, Hal. So thanks for, um, one of my favorite public comments is when people come in and give us ideas. Um, and so I really, I really appreciate when people do that at Mayor's Mondays, but I really appreciate when people do it at City Commission too. Um, those are two legitimately good ideas. I call those intersections, I named them, you know, that movie a couple of years ago, Everything Everywhere All at Once. Um, that's what those intersections are. And, and they are being used around the country and they're an interesting idea. I don't think they're a panacea. I don't think they're a fix for everything, but they're made well be places where those are, uh, good ideas and can improve flow and livability, which is what we all should be trying to work on. So love hearing good, thoughtful input from the community, so keep it coming. Thanks, everybody. Uh, oh, that doesn't end the meeting. Uh, City Clerk?
Couple things. Um, we're going to have a, there will be a special election on November 4th for the Kent County Municipal District and the two voters who live in Godwin Heights School District inside the city of Grand Rapids. So, um, those will be, that'll be a special election November 4th. So if we see more stuff come out about that. And then also I want to thank the, um, staff that worked behind the scenes to have this meeting go today because we had a lot of, if you noticed, we had a lot of add-on things today. So there was a lot of hustling happening between, um, a lot of, a lot of staff. And so never thank anybody individually because you'll miss somebody. So thank you to all the staff, you know who you are, for making it go through even with two power outages in the building today. So it was an interesting day, but, um, we, we got our work done. And so thanks for everybody that worked fast and quickly today to get this done properly.
City Attorney? You got a limited number of times you get to say that now. And Deputy City Manager?
Yeah, so the manager left me some comments. Hold on. No, I'm just joking. Um, everybody did thank the staff, so I, I cede my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.